Council, City of Springfield, Illinois called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Sinore.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McPinniman.
Here.
Alderman Thailand.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Haner.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. At this time, we do have one presentation to Staff Sergeant Randall Taborn, if you'd come forward, and Alderman Sinore.
Well, it's always nice when we can recognize one of our own, actually when they've grown up, right?
Yes, sir.
And I'll just read the Certificate of Honor and then ask Alderman Sinore if you'd like to say anything in addition, but really, our greatest asset in our community, just like any community, is our people. So, this is in recognition of the great work that, in Certificate of Honor, it reads, "On behalf of the City of Springfield, Illinois, we recognize Staff Sergeant Randall J. Taborn."
Taborn.
Taborn, for being named the 2018 182nd Airlift Wing Illinois Airman of the Year. Staff Sergeant Taborn is a native of Springfield, the son of Elmer Taborn, and a graduate of Lincoln Magnet and Springfield High School. He has had a lifelong passion for wrestling, and in grade school became the freestyle wrestling state champion and the folk-style wrestling state champion in high school. He began his military career with the Air National Guard in 2014, serving as a fire protection journeyman for the 182nd Civil Service or Civil Engineer Squadron in Peoria, Illinois. Staff Sergeant Taborn provides emergency services to air and army guard personnel, as well as to the General Wayne Downing Peoria International Airport and its tenants. He has earned a reputation of being an airman who is highly focused, dedicated, and dependable, and someone who excels at the tasks and obstacles that have been placed before him. His hometown is proud of his services and achievements. Together with the city council and the residents, we recognize Staff Sergeant Taborn and congratulate him on his many successes.
Congratulations.
Would you like to say something, Alderman? Is that your alma mater?
Yep, I guess it is. I think sometimes you just let the award speak for itself, and Mr. Taborn, I know his father and his brother, and, you know, they're good stock, and we just appreciate that he's representing Springfield in the light that he's done, and I think it's a great honor that he was chosen Airman of the Year for the whole state of Illinois. So, thank you very much. You want to say anything? Sure. Elmer, you can come up and take pictures if you want. You good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
He lets his actions speak for his words, so thank you very much for the great service you provide all of us. The first item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2018-073 for the property located at 96 South Fox Mill Lane. Petitioner is Michael and Nadine Newmeister as lake leaseholders. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence, District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a petition to vary Section 3 setback of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to construct an enclosed breezeway connecting the existing area to the house, which will be 32.5 feet from the lot line, but will be attached to the existing garage. That at its closest point is 8.2 feet from the property line instead of the 10 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-074 for the property located at 4751 Roger Street. Petitioner is Curtis A. Trampy. Present zoning classification is I1, light industrial district, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief of variance of Sections 155.112 surfacing to allow construction of an open off-street parking lot of dustless rock without requiring a wearing surface of asphaltic concrete or comparable hard surface, 155.136. Regulations for surfacing of off-street loading facilities to allow use of the open off-street loading spaces of dustless rock without requiring a durable hard surface pavement, 155.143. Plan of off-street parking or loading areas to allow use of the property as a parking lot for six tractors and trailers to park. And 155.480 landscape screening and lighting regulations to allow use of a parking area without requiring a landscape plan, including but not limited to installation and maintenance of parking, lot landscaping, screening, and lighting, and the points related to that. A five-year period to be in compliance with the above sections is requested. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval, limited to two years. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission with regards to the two-year limit of paving. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass the zoning petition as submitted with the five-year instead of the two-year.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the zoning petition as submitted with the five-year period of time, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-075 for the property located at 5836 Kelly Point Drive. Petitioner is Centennial Park Subdivision LLC. Present zoning classification, R1, single-family residence, District Section 155.015. Requested zoning relief, variance of Section 155.061D, basic yard requirements to allow a front yard setback of 25 feet instead of the 30 feet required per code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning to approve. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, we recommend to accept Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve the petition.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-076 for the property located at 5819 Kelly Point Drive. Petitioner is Matthew K. and Elsa C. Johnson. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence, District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.061D, basic yard requirements to allow a front yard setback corporal place of 15 feet instead of the 30 feet setback required per code, and add a rear yard setback of 7 feet 6 inches west property line instead of the 20 feet setback required per code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approved, the petitioner's request as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to approve, the petition as submitted, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-077 for the property located at 2224 through 2230 South Ninth Street. Petitioner is Chris Roberts. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence, District Section 155.017, with a use variance for a wholesale toy outlet and a warehouse with no local retail sales, docket 2000-029, and a use variance for a painting contractor office and warehouse with the restriction that there be no outside storage and vehicles of materials or supplies, docket 2001-007. Requested zoning relief reclassification to B1, Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033, and a variance of Section 155.112 surfacing for 2230 South Ninth Street to allow the continued use of the driveway and parking area without a dustless surface. In the alternative, if the reclassification is not granted, request the granting of a use variance to repair powered hand tools and lawn care equipment with no retail sales. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of reclassification to B1, but granting of a use variance to allow for a repair of power hand tools and lawn equipment with no retail sales, and a variance of Section 155.112 surfacing for 2230 South Ninth Street to allow the continued use of the driveway and parking area without a dustless surface for a period of not to exceed two years. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to deny this petition. We have talked to, I've talked to Mr. Roberts about this. The neighborhood is not in favor of having this kind of establishment in the middle of a block in a neighborhood setting, so we are looking, I know the neighborhood wants to have this denied.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to deny. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor of the motion to deny, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. The motion to deny is 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-078 for the property located at 2000 East Sangamon Avenue. Petitioner is St. Aloysius Parish, a part of the Roman Catholic Diocese in Springfield, Illinois. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family residence and duplex residence, District 155.017. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.311C, Residence Office District Sign Regulations, Non-Illuminated Nameplates and Identification Signs to allow an electronic message board and sign not to exceed 38 square feet instead of the 16 feet permitted for community uses in an R2 zoning district. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move we accept the recommendation of the staff and approve the petition.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Staff Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for approval, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-0079 for the property located at Parcel 1, 301, 305, 313, and 323 West South Grand Avenue, Parcel 2, 1202, and 1204 South College, and 218 West Vine Street, and Parcel 3, 1200 South Passfield, 1201, and 1205 South College Street. Petitioner is Zen Construction LLC as contract purchaser. Present zoning classification is R5B, General Residence and Office District, Section 155.021 for Parcel 1 and 2, and R3B, General Residence District, Section 155.018 for Parcel 3. Requested zoning relief reclassification to S2, Community Shopping and Office District, Section 155.031, and conditional permitted use pursuant to Sections 155.031C2, accessory off-street parking lot not on the same zoning lot as served, and 155.183 accessory off-street parking not on the same lot served for Parcels 2 and 3, and a variance of Section 155.114B Regulation of Off-Street Parking to allow the existing parking spaces located in a required front yard setback for Parcel 2, College Street property line of Parcel 2. If the reclassification of S2 is not granted, request of a use variance for Parcel 1 to allow for operation of a fitness center in the R5B zoning district. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of S2 for Parcel 1, denial of S2 for Parcels 2 and 3, and the conditional permitted uses for the S2. Approval of a conditional permitted use for an accessory off-street parking lot not to, not on the same lot as the served for Parcel 2 and 3, and the requested variance to allow parking in the front yard for Parcel 2. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request is passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for approval, 10 voting yes, non-voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-080 for the property located at 14 Idlewild Lane. Petitioner is 14 Idlewild LLC. Present zoning classification, R1, single-family residence, District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a petition to vary Section 9 docks of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow the existing dock to remain at its current extension into the lake of approximately 50 feet from the shoreline at normal full-pool elevation instead of the maximum 35 feet. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approved. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation and grant relief for the one dock extending into the lake as requested in the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning request passes 10 voting yes, non-voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. At this time, I'd ask Director Mahoney, if you'd like to come forward, and we'll give you your presentation, and then from there, go on with the regular city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a presentation, but each one of you should have got a packet, and in there, what I thought it might be helpful is just kind of give you, it's information that most of us on the website, sort of our snow and ice removal policy is in procedures, as well as there's information there on the, one of the added features actually we have this year is you can go on the website, and there's AVL, which is basically how we track our trucks. So, residents can go on there. I know a couple of Aldermen were using it over the weekend quite a bit, and what it does, it shows you where our trucks have been, where the coverage is, and then also there's a disclaimer that explains where we do use contractors in some of the snow removal, which is explained in those policies and procedures. So, it kind of gives you an idea. It's not 100%, because there is some variables in there, and there's sometimes when the AVLs are not reacting, but it does give people an idea of what's being done. And then there's some information in there as well as additional, like where our snow emergency routes are as well. And it looks like we've been, I think most of you know, in full operation since we started at 7:00 PM on Friday evening and ran three consecutive night shifts up to about, till 7:00 PM, I think it was Monday, and of course, we're back in this morning, and we sent guys home at 11:00 to come back. It looks like unfortunately, it's kind of a replay of yesterday or this morning, so we'll probably end up putting some salt down this morning, most likely. We're going to watch it and see it. So, as you most of you know, we have engineering that monitors throughout the night, so basically there's back and forth. I talked to TJ Heavyside, so actually he's monitoring tonight, and him and I will talk at some point and make a decision to call guys in or not. Then I usually try to send a text out, hopefully that's helpful to you guys, just let you know what's going on. And then, I don't give you minute to minute, sometimes I don't really bother you unless there's something that's changed, or the conditions have changed, and I do, we all appreciate your patience over the weekend. It's been challenging just to whittle away at snow, that amount of snow, and the challenge was it just never stopped snowing until Sunday, probably at noon before it really stopped. So, we would get things somewhat clearer, and then we'd have to go back at it again, which slowed down getting into a lot of the subdivisions. So, it's a process, as you all know, and this, always the first big snowstorm, it seems like there's a, there's a lot of frustration from the public out there, and I know you guys hear a lot of that, and we try to address that as best we can and be as efficient, and I appreciate your understanding, we can't just pull a truck off and send it across town here or there. We try to balance the approach because it's much more efficient and we get the job done a little bit quicker. And we try to work closely with our contractors, with Lake Services as well. We're meeting with them in the morning to talk about the approach out there, the lake area, and how we can do a better job with that, especially because it looks like we got, as most of you have probably seen by now, we're talking about the stuff today and tomorrow, but then you get into Thursday, Friday, all the way really through mid to late next week, it looks like there's going to be several plus inches of snow, a few inches coming later this week, and then this weekend, looks like five to eight, and then again, kind of a replay next week, and then of course, it looks like it's going to get colder on Sunday for a period. So, I think it's safe to say winter is here, is January, but the important thing is we're a day closer to spring every day, so.
Right.
Got to take that into consideration, so. I'd be glad to answer any questions. One thing the mayor did to bring, real quick, is the mayor asked us about the use of contractors, which kind of helps us speed up the operation. The cost when we do that, what we do, we usually wait until the snow stops, because what happens if we send them in too early, and that's kind of what happened here, we had some areas where we sent them in, because probably Saturday, I think it was Saturday evening when we put them in there, but the snow was still continuing. So, what happened is you'll see a lot of areas where they were in, and we have a supervisor overseas that looks at the area and judges the, you know, when, if they've done a good job, that kind of thing, and works with them on those and make sure they didn't miss anything. But after they're out of there, then we had more snow, and then of course, on Sunday, we had some thawing, so, and that's what kind of, we got areas, not just the contractors, but our areas as well, that are kind of a mess right now, and we're trying to work through those best we can, but it's cold, and a lot of that's frozen, so it's kind of hard to push off. We have right now three trucks out just kind of troubleshooting and addressing those, and then if we get calls, we kind of address it as we kind of work through it. So, anyway, that's really kind of a quick version, so.
Alderman Redpath.
Mark, I appreciate the enormous amount of work that you guys had to do. It's the biggest snowstorm we've had since 1964, from what I understand, and the bottom line is, is that it's a lot of snow to push, but, you know, the thing is, is that our process, when we start in the central part of the town and work our way out, sometimes we don't see a snow plow for two or three days.
Alderman, that's not our process. I encourage you to read the information I provided there.
Mark, all's I know is I drive mine the whole time, and I.
So do I.
And I can tell you right now, the only place it was got, was taken care of was Palisades at the time, because that's a troubled area that we've had in the past. And I can tell you from the enormous amount of calls that we've all taken, and I know every Alderman's got different issues about it, but I can tell you this, that there's that much ice on the street after it was, because people were driving over the snow. The snow was so deep, they had to drive to get out, and they compacted down, and so when they came in there, they didn't get the ice off, and so that's the problem. We, if we're putting the contractors in there too late, then we need to start putting them in there earlier. I don't care what the money, I don't care what it costs, because frankly, the people pay these taxes and they're furious, and we need to, we need to, if we have to put more money in that budget just for the snow removal, let's do it. I don't care where we take it from, but we got to do it, because this is important.
Alderman, some of that.
And we're going to get hit, we're going to get hit again this weekend, real hard.
We can, and this happens, and we've dealt with this before, and the reaction has been similar. I mean, we have people that are professionals at doing this, and they take it very seriously. They try to do a good job.
Well, they need to come out and set in the board then, because they're not getting, if it wasn't for Lake Services over here, I called them and asked them to come in and clear it so people could get out to go work, and they did that, and I appreciate them doing that. They got other stuff to take care of. We're supposed to be taking care of the roads out there, but with Public Works trucks right now, and it's not happening. I'm going to tell you right now, they weren't there. I didn't see one red truck out there until this afternoon, and I seen a guy come down my street with some salt, and I walked out the door just to make sure it was a city truck, but I'm going to tell you right now, people are furious.
Alderman, the only thing I can do, I can give you a report of the information, we have when the truck.
I don't care what your report says, Mark, I live there, I see it.
What we'll do is ask Director Mahoney to provide the, what subdivisions the contractors were doing, and then we can follow up with that that way. So, if you wanted to explain.
I can do that.
Which ones the Public Works trucks take care of.
Yeah, we can do that as well.
And then the, how the contractors.
And we should be able to give you a time there in those areas and so forth. But again, I know it's frustrating, I understand what you're saying, Alderman, but we have to also keep the main routes clear too, so a lot of times it delays.
Look, I know we had an annulation, and we had to clean downtown, that was an obligation that we have to do, it's important to the city of Springfield, but we got to make sure we got trucks out there. If you need to hire more contractors, you need to do that. And if we don't have the money, let's take it from somewhere else. This is really important. It, all of us are getting it, every one of us.
Yep.
Alderman Haner.
Thank you. Mark, first of all, I, you know, we, I worked with you a lot this weekend, it was frustrating. I, my wife had the comment that she would hate to be your wife because she saw how frustrating it was for me, and I, and you've got the whole city.
I didn't see my wife most time.
Yeah. So, the good, we had neighborhoods out there, the contractors did, that were done first time ever within, you know, 12 hours of the snow, and I got great rave reviews about it, but, and it seemed like where the contractors were, they did a great job, it was just the areas that we were waiting on city trucks that it took a long time, and, and I know, you know, I don't know, maybe we need to expand what some of the contractors do, the, you know, the Happy Landing, you know, Cobblestone, Ginger Creek, and Scarborough's, just one area, and there's, Oak Park is another that got missed, but, you know, overall, I think what the contractors did, it was a great thing. I know Piper Glen and Savannah Point and all them, they were thrilled, because normally they're the last ones to get done, but I, I just, and I know you're going to miss some streets here and there, it just seems, seems like once we get in a subdivision, it'd be good to clear that subdivision before we do a couple of streets and then go somewhere else, and I don't know what, how they determine that, but.
And we would like to have more contractors. We have the most contractors involved right now, as we ever have, we have five of them, and what we ended up doing as the night went on, some of them finished, there's a couple of them that have the equipment, and we're able to get through their errors a little bit quicker, so we started moving them around and sort of treating them like another Public Works crew.
Right.
The problem is when we put this out, and we've done it a couple of times now for an RFP, is because of the kind of winters we've had around here lately, there's not a lot of contractors necessarily that have bid on it, because you're not guaranteed to have them work, you have to have certain equipment, so it's usually the contractors, like our bigger ones are like Bratton's, Sagamo, as well as Lewis has some bigger equipment, and then some of the smaller ones. We didn't get the response that we thought we would get. What we looked at other cities, and what they, some of them do in certain areas, is they put them sort of on a retainer, so they're guaranteed so much money, it does start to drive the price up, but that's an option, if we're willing to pay whatever it takes, you can start talking about some of those options.
Right.
But what it is, is basically you're guaranteed whatever, so much money a year, even if we don't use you. In the last three years, we haven't called a contractor once, because as you know, we haven't had a lot of snow, and this is really, and part of it, I think, is it's frustration because of, the public has just gotten used to not really having bad snows. I mean, the last bad snow, this, the response and the complaints is very similar to what we had the last time it was a large snow, it was 2015, who had reasonably large snow, and it was very similar. As the winter on, if you remember, that was a decent winter, decent as, we got a lot of snow, bad weather, we're in pretty much every weekend, we judged, just based on our calls, we were hammered, and we understand that people were frustrated when it started. As time went on, we got less and less calls, either people either gave up or got depressed or whatever, but accepted the fact that it was winter and we were dealing with these conditions, and it, as we moved in, I'm not hoping for that, but the way it looks next week, that could be the case. So, I don't know, it's a combination of things. We can look at that. If the council's willing, and the mayor to support us with more funds, and we open up the door on the contracting, and then the other piece that helps is obviously is very simple, more tandem trucks, which we're looking to purchase more of those, but those are mostly replacement, but the mayor asked us for new initiatives that we're working on, if something to give you guys for the budget, that would add about, I think we're looking at 10 additional tandems and quite a few more TDLs to drive them. So, if you want more response, yeah, it's adding headcount, it's adding tandems, and it's paying a little more for more contractors, or keeping on retainer to get more contractors.
And then the only other question I have is, I got a few calls today about, you know, how you'll have a guy go through and catch part of their grass and all that, they, you want them just to call Public Works directly?
Just call us, and we try, when, when things clear up.
For damage or?
Yeah, and a lot of times we'll go back in the spring and we'll seed those, so.
Okay.
And same with mailboxes, call us. If, when our guy hits a mailbox, what we do is, if we're aware of it, they go and put, the supervisor puts a letter in their, in the door, and they tell them to call us, and then we address it.
Is there a way that we can get some of the salt, get salt some of the roads, because like Chuck said, that there are some very thick patches of solid ice in the middle of the roads that, you know, as it's thawed a little bit, and then is there a way we can get some of that?
So the three trucks I was mentioning, that's basically what they're doing. So if we have areas that we know of, spot hitting them, and they're cleanup, we're trying to hit some of those. We don't have, and never have had enough salt to hit all the residential streets. Nor do you probably want to, because what it does to the roads, the deterioration, what it does to the sewers, what it does to landscaping, all that is not a, is a, probably outweighs the benefit of using the salt. But if you have locations like that, continue to send, and even though, I know it's frustrating, but send those to us as you get them, and we try, like I said, we don't just ignore it. We put it on a list, we try to work through it, and that's what those trucks are doing right now. But again, there's only, we only have so many resources, and it just, there's always gonna be some delay in getting it, depending on the storm. So we do the best, and frankly, you know, I'm very proud of the public works guys. They did, as a group, the team did well. We didn't have, I think we had three guys that called off on one of the shifts, and that's 'cause a couple, they were sick, and they were, you know, excuses were valid. But that's unheard of. Usually, especially when you get into that third night, we see people not showing up. They stepped up, and in my opinion, did a good job, and I just commend them. Because, I mean, I've been doing this for eight years, and I know, I can tell you that our operation is better than it was eight years ago. We have better equipment, thanks in part to the council, the mayor. We've had two equipment go arounds, and it looks like hopefully we're gonna get some more equipment. That's helped, we had less breakdowns because of that than we had in the past. There's always some breakdowns, just the nature of it. But compared to what we had in years past, we had a lot of junk out there, and that's getting better. So, but, like I said, you can always, it's just money, and if you give us more money, I guarantee you that it'll get better, so.
Well, we'll find money.
Alderman Tyler?
I guarantee you'll be able to find money.
All right. I guess, first thing I have to say, and this is something that I know that definitely Alderman Redpath understands, having been alderman for even longer period than I have. The number one thing that I have to say that changed about my life by being an alderman is I hate snow now.
Yeah.
I absolutely cannot stand seeing it come down from the sky. It just makes my skin crawl, 'cause I know what's going to happen.
Not even about Christmas?
No. Give me a green Christmas every time, I don't care anymore. But, there's, there's some good, there's some bad, and there's some ugly about what happened this last weekend. The good is, is that with your tracking software, I can tell you, for the first time in my twelve years, almost now as an alderman, I didn't have a single street that got missed this time. I had, every one of my streets did end up getting plowed, including Conifer and Pinion, which always got skipped. And then we, we didn't have any of the issues with somebody calling on Monday morning saying, "I never did get, never did see a plow come through." So that's the first part of the good. The second part of the good is, is your staff. The actual public works employees were amazing. I have to give a complete round of applause to every single one of the men and women who worked their tails off this weekend. Their work was appreciated, noted, and I think every single one of the aldermen up here can honestly say that, that we're happy with the public works employees.
I appreciate that, and we'll pass that along. Thank you.
Then, we get to the bad. The bad part is, is that I think what we're doing with the contractors may not be working out as well. I had most of my neighborhoods west of Chatham Road that did not see a plow until sometime Sunday. And I think that when we're dealing with a large snow like this, I understand waiting till the snow stops before we send somebody in, but if we've got eight inches of snow, and we wait for it to stop, and it's taken two days for that to stop, by the time they get in there, we're gonna have what Alderman Redpath was talking about, where you have packed snow that's turning to ice, and they're not gonna be able to blade it off very well. I think they need to be running through these neighborhoods at the three-inch or four-inch mark, and make sure that they're, you know, getting the worst part of it out of there before it gets packed down, and then they come back again a second time. I think that Knox Knolls, Cokey Mill East, Cokey Mill West, these areas didn't see a plow. I know for a fact, Cokey Mill East didn't see a plow until after 10:30 at night on Sunday night.
That's, some areas-
And that was a contractor.
So at 1:30 on Sunday night, we were going through on the, as you described with the AVL, you're correct, there's some areas, it was probably about 6:00 AM in the morning before, 'cause we kept the whole shift through 7:00 AM until they got through everything. There might have been a piece here or there that was missed, but 99.9% of everything, what should have been covered. But it, it just takes time to get across the city. There's 625 miles, 2,000 lane miles. The only way to, to speed it up, is really, it comes down to more money. If you give us more money for more equipment, more headcount, and that's the biggest way to speed it up. And then the other piece is, if we can get more contractors by putting some of them on retainer.
And that goes to part of what we're talking about here. I think the areas that were covered by the city itself, I have no complaints with whatsoever in my ward. The only areas that I did have complaints, and I had multiple phone calls and multiple angry people, were the ones where we were waiting on the contractors. And, like I said, that section of Cokey Mill from Isles to Old Jacksonville Road, from Cokey Mill to Veterans, I think Greenbrier got hit running through, because it's considered an, a secondary arterial. And White Oaks West might have gotten hit, because it's also a secondary arterial. But most of those other roads in there, Westgate and Cokey Mill East, that, those were the bulk of my calls. And the contractor did not, I, I literally did get an email that I have in my inbox at 11:30 that says, "Just finally saw a plow."
So, the area you're describing is, the contractors respond when we call them. So it's up, it's on us if they're laying a contract. But basically, they said, we give them where they need to go, they respond, they get out there, and they get it done. There was a case, and you're, and part of that area, where they didn't get it all done, because they ran sixteen hours, and by law, you can't run more than sixteen hours for labor. So they had to pull off of it. So then we ended up doing that, so it did take a little bit longer. I think Cokey Mill East is probably one of those areas, some of the area you're talking about.
That was the last area to get hit, for me.
And, again, I mean, it's inevitable there's gonna be an area that's gonna be last. I mean, there's just no way around that. What we try to do is manage, as we have more snows and we have bigger events, the next big event, we have, make a conscious decision and try to adjust that. We gotta be careful with that, because then, then the story becomes, "Oh, we're last this time." So what we try to do is, best we can, is kinda manage through that. But again, it just comes down, if we had more trucks, we had more guys, or women, men and women, and more of that-
And I've been a proponent of getting you those trucks and getting you those crews, because I think year-round, we need to be doing more stump, stump grinding, we need to be doing more branch pickup, we need to be doing the plowing.
There's plenty for them to do year-round.
There's plenty of work to go around, which is why, honestly, you know, one of the tricks that the state uses, if it's, if it helps anything at all, is look at maybe doing the six-month or three-month temporary hires, where you hire somebody on, you bring them in for the three-month period, and then, you know, they're laid off for three months, and then bring them back three months later, and you stagger through your workforce. If that's something that might help you, you know-
We could look at doing that, but again, we have to have the equipment for them to use, or the other piece of it. And it seems to be, and what the mayor asked us kinda to put together is basically, kinda what you're describing, is those areas like branch pickup, and certain areas of public works, where if we had more headcount, we could provide more services or enhance services. But the benefit of that is exactly what you're talking about, it enhances the snow operations, too, because we have those people available, and it would improve the response time, to just be even more responsive.
And I would actually be more in favor of you bringing in those temporary workers during those seasonal times, if we have the equipment for them to run, than spending more money on a contractor for the same thing.
Yeah, we, we agree with that, as long as we have the, the equipment for them to use, yeah.
Right. If we have the equipment. If we don't, then we have to go with the contractors, because they bring the equipment with them.
Yeah, correct.
But I, I think that, and then the last part, the ugly, and this is something that, I don't know if the other aldermen have been getting calls about this, but the people who are complaining, saying that they got plowed into their driveway. Okay. If the plow actually turns and drops a mountain of it over there, then I can understand their complaint, like if they didn't realize it was a driveway and they pushed the big load off to the side. But I think everybody needs to understand that when the plows are running down the street, these guys aren't aiming for the driveway. I dug myself out of a three-foot-tall barrier that was created after the, the plows went through. I know that a couple of the other aldermen were talking before the meeting that they did the same thing. So, I mean, when people are saying that, it's, it's one or the other. If you're, if you want the plows, you're gonna end up with some of that going over in front of your driveway, it happens. And if you don't want that, then I guess the alternative is, we don't plow your street.
And we, as you know, we get quite a few of those, those calls about that. And, and as you describe, if, it's a cul-de-sac especially, we, our drivers' goal is, we don't pile in front of a driveway, we try to get it off to the side. Sometimes it happens. If it does happen, we will go back and clean it up. And if we put a big pile in front of a driveway, but the regular, you described it well, the regular up and down the streets, there's little we could do, we just don't have the time, resources to stop and guarantee that we're not plowing in driveways. There's no way around that. Because our guys, they're trying to get through there as quick as they possibly can. And the other challenge is, and you have this in your area, where we have streets that are so narrow, we can barely get a plow down. And we had a discussion about, I know somebody kinda, I think kinda got you-
West Capital.
Yeah, where we've had a situation where, we've talked about this in the past, is maybe we look more, expand, so the snow emergency routes, where there's, or there's only parking on one side during a snow emergency. But as you know, that, there's a lot of communication with that, a lot of enforcement, those kinda things that would have to fall into place. A lot of it, and we try to do more public announcements, letting people know, hey, if you can get your car off the street when it's, you're gonna have a large snowstorm, it helps all around, no matter where, even if we got plenty of room. If the cars are off the street, it's easier to go curb to curb. Our goal is curb to curb. A lot of times, especially what we try to do to speed up, getting people out, sometimes we'll do a down and back. Now, when we do that, we'll have to, it is very, most places are curb to curb, but when we do that, we gotta come back. So sometimes that causes even more problems, because when we come back, we plow them in again, or those kinda things, and they get angry about that. But it's kind of, you wanna steer quicker, you wanna bend better, and then also, if you get the cars off the street, it allows us to do it better, so.
Okay. I think, in closing, the one thing which I would like to see is, I think every street should see something within the first 24 to 36 hours, instead of going almost full 48 before we finally saw a plow in a couple of those neighborhoods.
Our, our policy, and again, we, we can adjust that if we're able to get more resources, but our policy has been, once the snow stops, it's 24 hours from that period. We, we actually beat that this weekend, if you look at it, 'cause we were in some of the neighborhoods, it, as you know, I mean, it was snowing basically off and on, well, the bulk of it, Friday and into Saturday. And then, every time we thought we'd get ahead of it, then it would hit us again, and we got it on Sunday again, it was still snowing by, at Sunday noon. But you saw Sunday afternoon, we started to dig out a little bit quicker, and the, and not, and again, I mean, I commend my guys, and then I, we talk to other cities, we know what they're doing to some degree as well. I mean, Champagne was saying this afternoon, they're still digging out, they haven't been down every residential street. Jacksonville, same situation, they got a little bit more over there. But those other cities, I mean, what our situation is not unusual. And that's why, a lot of these guys, several of our special managers, the guys that are supervising, they are American Public Works Association, we put them through training as far as best practices and approaches of how we deal with these situations. So it's not like we, we don't constantly try to figure out ways that we can improve the service and be more responsive. But the simple answer, yeah, more money, more resources, and it would be. And that's, if the alderman can find us more money and buy us more trucks-
How many trucks are you guys getting ready to buy?
A million dollars, tandem order, I think is about six to eight tandems. But a lot of those are replacement.
Why don't you cut one of those trucks out and use it for the overtime, or use it for the contractors? Take some of that money and move it to another line item, so we can use it for contractors.
Well, you could, but then that means one less truck, so we'll pull back our operation?
So what? We gotta get the snow, the snow cleaned up, Mark, this is, this is malarkey. These people are mad, they're real mad.
But you're not, so you're pulling back-
Do you have money in your budget now? I mean, as far as that goes?
So-
This, he's talking about the equipment for next year, not this year.
Yeah.
So, if we have money in the budget for $60,000, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, we'll, we're gonna have to come back, you guys supplement already. So what's, we'll spend, if you want us to go to town and use the contractors more, we can, I mean-
Mark, I don't care who you use, you can use Santa Claus, as far as I'm concerned. I just want the snow moved. Everybody in here wants the same thing?
Alderman McMinimum?
Mark, there's a lot of gratitude out there, yeah, there's complaints, there's a lot of gratitude out there. You know, when, when there's an act of God, a severe storm, five-year storm, 10-year storm, whatever it is, life does change. And, you know, fortunately, many of our residents did not have to work Saturday or Sunday, so that was a blessing in disguise. You had multiple tasks to accomplish. We're a capital city, we had a major event yesterday, we had to keep those mains open, and most of those mains had to be plowed after five hours, after 10 hours, after 15 hours, because there's new reaccumulations. Not every subdivision can be first, we don't want any subdivision to be last, but that's the way life is. The grid patterns are easier for our truck drivers to handle. We've designed subdivisions that are purposefully confusing to preclude through traffic. We've got volumes of cul-de-sacs now that take two, three, four times the amount of time it's a linear street. We've got double the number of roads that we had 40 years ago, but fewer drivers. Now, we can buy all the equipment on earth and let it sit idle for the other four years, when we don't have to use it. And we can have all kinds of CBL drivers out there that can sit idle and that aren't trained for other tasks. But we have to live in the real world, this was an exceptional event, and overall, you're improving the situation, because that online map, where you can go online and look where, what streets have been redded out because they were covered, you can actually see where the trucks are with blue dots. That's available to the public, that's never been done before in Springfield. That's a vast advancement by your department, and you deserve credit and appreciation for that. Now, yeah, you get complaints out there, 'cause not everybody understands our situation, but I want you to know that a lot of folks said, "Be sure to let the crews know how much they were appreciated." They're driving dangerous equipment, under dangerous conditions, snow's coming down, dark areas in many subdivisions, and they gotta not hit anybody or damage property. And I don't, did, did we have any serious accidents by our drivers during almost, how many, more than 48 hours of operations? Tired individuals, driving? So we gotta put it all in perspective, and, and not jump on guys that deserve credit. You know, and we don't have the equipment for 24-hour plow everywhere, we're, we're, we're basically 48 hours on a 12-inch snowstorm that, that comes down over multiple falls. But there's one area, Mark, I would like you to look at, and I think you've received some calls, our schools. And I think the, the businesses are starting to clear out the sidewalks, they're now blocked, and we don't want our schoolchildren walking in the roads, because they can't walk on the sidewalks right now. And it's, we can't fix that immediately, but we just, maybe the media out there, you can advise businesses, there's a responsibility, clear sidewalks, so our children can walk can walk, uh, without danger. And so, we all have a responsibility to help, and homeowners have a responsibility eventually to clear their sidewalks, so we can be, all be safe. So I think that covers about the, the points that, uh, that needed to be covered from Ward 7.
Do you wanna comment on the sidewalks?
Sure. Actually, Alderman, that's exactly, we had some area, what, by, over by you as well, that we're addressing. Our housing inspectors went out there, spoke to, we asked them to talk to the managers of those areas. Some of it where the area had been cleared, but the contractor had piled the snow on the sidewalk. So, they were to remove that. For theirs, looks at the school, we asked them to get that done before school tomorrow. Well, our inspectors will be going back out there, looking at what's, and hopefully they'll have it done. If they haven't, we've talked to legal about what the next step is, whether it's a ticket. And that's probably, I think, the course they're thinking, where we send an officer to ticket them. But hopefully, they will comply. Especially the business, commercial areas where there's a lot of foot traffic, those, and by the schools. I also asked the housing inspectors, actually, they were already doing it, but they're, um, going to the school areas, look around that area, check the sidewalks out, make sure that they're in pretty good shape. Uh, and then, as well as our trucks are going back and trying to clean up. Because even though we've cleared some of that area because of the thaw and the freezing, all that, it's still pretty rough. So, um, we're doing our best to kind of stay on top of that, and we'll be doing it again tomorrow. Tomorrow's temperatures, road temperature's supposed to warm up some, so it's an opportunity for us to push off in time for the next round. So, that's kind of what they're doing tomorrow.
Thank you. Alderman, Senor?
I hate to do this. Let me flip this coin. No, but we appreciate, um, it's, 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 I hate to jump on you, but it's gotten better. Uh, Ward 2 was, a lot of things were done before the time period. Um, but we still have problems with people pushing their snow in the street that own businesses or private lots or whatever. I mean, how can we address that? And then there's, there's sidewalks that are covered. Um, got complaints about that. I got complaints from people in other wards. I'm sure the other Alderman probably got those calls too. And so how do, you know, you did a good job, but you didn't do a good job because of the circumstances and everything that was encompassed within what was going on. And it's probably gonna happen again this, this weekend, as far as what the weather forecast is for Friday night and Saturday morning, so. Thank you.
I got a call from Curran.
Thank you. Well, what, what, I mean, you know, how do we, how do we address those?
But, yeah, you're not gonna beat Mother Nature. We're doing everything we possibly can, but it's uphill battle. But if, if you got people pushing snow into the street or sidewalks or whatever, let, let us know, and we'll send housing out there, and they will, like I said, they'll cite them, or, we try to work with them. So we tell, have them clean it up, clear your sidewalk, and then, um, and then deal with it accordingly if we have to. Most people do, do comply if we, we send somebody out to talk to them. Um, it's, like I said, it's been a while since we had snow stay on the ground. Usually we have a snowstorm, and then it warms up and it goes away lately, the last few years. But it doesn't look like that's gonna be the case, at least for a while here. So, it's important for them to clear it and get it ready for the next round, so we can, uh, keep them passable.
I had a couple of calls Sunday, said their streets hadn't been done, but if that's all I get, I'll take that.
Yeah, let me know, and we'll check. Most of them probably were plowed, but it, it's gotten, where it's deteriorated, they need to be plowed again. As that's what we're trying to do, is push that off. And tomorrow, hopefully, we'll get quite a bit more pushed off. And then, but then again, it's supposed to snow, and we'll have to go back, but it's the way it is.
And what's the best way to, uh, call? You have a, or email, or what's the...
The dispatch, uh, there's the, there is the email on the city website, but the 789-2246 is our 24-hour dispatch. And if you call, and it, for some reason, sometimes when there's heavy volume of calls, especially when people, depending on snow, if people first waking up and calling, uh, you may get a voicemail, but we retrieve those off of there, and then we make a list and kind of go over those. So that list of people calling on, uh, Sunday, Saturday and Sunday night, we start that, and we start looking at the ABL, going through that to make sure those areas were, were hit the best we can, and figure out if they have been covered, or get an idea when they are. But 789-2246 is the best number to call.
And then if it's, uh, busy, it'll go into voicemail?
It goes in the voicemail. During regular hours, 8 to 4:30, um, you can also, there's the main number, 789-2255. A lot of people call that as well. That actually, after hours, if nobody's answering that, or weekends, it does prompt them to the 789-2246 number. People seem, they find us, one way or another.
Right. And the reason I ask that is, you should direct people to that number, not to a person. And I got a kick out of, uh, I'll just tell you, my family's so large, is Alderman Hanauer calls me up. I hope you don't mind me sharing this. And he goes, uh, they've been down Headley and Fielding, because he lives out west, and he goes, they did your brother's street. I go, where's, I go, my brother's? He goes, yeah, he lives on Cronin. I go, did they do the other streets, the side streets? And he said, no. I go, because they're supposed to do the main streets of the subdivisions. And then when there's time, you go back and do all the interior. And so, uh, I called my brother up, and he goes, yeah, what they do is they go down Headley, or Fielding, one or the other, go down and come up, and they use Cronin as a crossroads street. You know, so that's where he goes, does the Fielding, or Headley, whatever the case is.
I just figured he had more pull than you.
Yeah, that's right. Oh, it gets better. So Monday morning, I get a text message from my sister, and she says, uh, there hadn't been, I'll read it to you if that's all right.
Which sister? Which sister? Because you have like five.
This is how, this is, uh, just so nobody knows, uh, understands, there's no preferential treatment, but it goes right to the heart of what everybody's saying. And she sends me a text. It says, "Just an update on our subdivision. City came by about 11 o'clock last night," that's Sunday night, "and did a great job. Before that, I did not see anyone clearing our roads unless it was extremely early Saturday morning. Just telling you, in case adjustments need to be made, because I had heard Cokey Mill East was contracted out for snow removal." She lives in Cokey Mill East. So I had, uh, my sister was one of the last ones. So, really, uh, what it points out is, everybody's impacted, and it depends on if you're, you got plowed earlier, you're happy. If not, you're not. And so that's the, that's, but the public works, we really appreciate the hard work. Uh, CWLP, I know Larry Rockford's here, they've done a great job, and it's a lot of hours. I even said, I, you know, I for one could not do that, because you're up long hours, uh, doing that work, and, uh, it is tiresome. It's amazing that they didn't have more incidents than they did. Uh, but it is crucial that the businesses go out and shovel the sidewalks, or individuals along their residence, shovel your sidewalks. Because when I'm driving, uh, that morning when I was driving along Laurel, uh, my mother's street, driving along Laurel, you see kids in the sidewalk, or in the street, and it's slippery. I mean, it's icy and everything else. So, it's a dangerous situation, so we'd ask people to clear their sidewalks. But tomorrow, you're going to meet with, uh, CWLP and, uh, get coordination and go over what worked well, what didn't work well, and then, uh, try to improve the process, because that's what it's all about. How can we make it better? Just like you pointed out, eight years ago, we're in a better place, but hopefully, we'll be in a better place years from now. And so, we appreciate your good works with regards to that. Alderman, Redpath.
We don't have 13 kids in our family, but I got 10. And I can tell you, all my brothers and sisters call me, but they live in Ward 4, so I don't have to be their Alderman anymore.
Just refer him to Alderman Fuginci.
Half of them called me.
I don't.
Any other, uh, questions, comments?
I just wanna echo what Alderman McMinim said. I don't want it lost in the translation that people are happy with the public works crews. And we do appreciate the effort and the job that they did.
Thank you.
You got the best job ever, Director.
Thanks.
Lucky devil.
And the one thing on the G...
It's usually worst job ever, every time.
The one thing on the GPS, that's only on city trucks, uh, but the mapping shows all the red streets were anybody, contractors. You update that with the contractors, what they plowed to as well.
Yeah, well...
Is that how that works?
No, it's, there is a disclaimer. It says which subdivisions are the contractors, and you, if you wish to call, we can let you know. Right now, we don't have the capability. This is kind of, we just ruled this out. The intent is, once we get contractors set, we'll probably be giving them AVLs, which other communities do, then you can track it. So, um, that is more of, we're having to try to, try to do that manually, but we're not quite there yet.
And then on the salt, if you could cover that, we do have a salt location out west.
Yeah, our main salt is, as most of you know, the Salt Dome. It holds about 3,000 ton, is down, uh, at the garage, and then, uh, on Clear Lake. And then we have a location off of Schooner, off of, and Prairie Crossing, which we've been using the last several years. Uh, one of the new initiatives we're gonna talk to you about is also a permanent west-side location, where we can have better storage. Right now, what we do is basically dump it. We could, we tarp it, but the tarp's been off for a while.
Need a motion for that right now, Mark?
Yeah, sure.
You need to give a budget...
But, uh, yeah, we have several hundred ton, usually a thousand, out there, and we use that, because it's a lot more efficient for that part of town.
Where does Lake Services get their salt from? They have to come downtown to get it?
No, we provide them salt. I think they haul it out to their, their, here, but they take, get salt set up at their place. Keep it out at, uh, your place?
We tarp it out.
Yeah, so.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Busher for presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of December had a beginning balance of $6,656,984. We took in total receipts of $7,919,317. We had total disbursements in the month of December of $7,470,213. And the ending balance of the corporate fund in the month of December was $7,106,88. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense the reading of the minutes of the January 3, 2019 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Turner.
Um, I'd like to be recorded as a no on 2019, um, 11.
Any other items? They've moved in second. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the cons, is that right?
It's being changed.
Did you vote?
Not on.
Not on.
It's 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 not on.
It doesn't on mine.
Doesn't mean, it looks like it hasn't cleared off the computer on mine.
Yeah, and I still have idle wild.
Maybe close out.
Sign out, sign back in. There's, it's not registering.
There it goes.
Okay.
I hit sign out, and it didn't sign me out. It cleared the screen.
There we go.
Ah, now I've got error, vote not updated.
You do roll call vote, please?
Delete.
Yep. Alderman, Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman, Senor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Fuginci.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Aye.
Alderman McMinim.
Aye.
Alderman Tylin.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no, and Alderwoman Turner voting no on 2019-11, 011. Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-489, 2018-110, 2018-545, 2019-008, and 2019-010 remain tabled in committee. Is there any movement on any of those? Next item on the agenda is number 2019-005, an ordinance authorizing a sole-source purchase of two Pierce Enforcer Custom Pumper Apparatus, FID number 1012, from Global Emergency Products for an amount not to exceed $1,200,000, and authorizing a short-term loan from Corporate Fund 001 to Fund 094 for an amount not to exceed $1,200,000 for said purchases for the Springfield Fire Department. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-005 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion?
Got a question.
Alderman, Redpath.
Hey, Chief, could you tell me, can you guys put a snowplow in front of that truck, those trucks?
But we need more money.
Everybody needs more money.
Alderman, Senor.
Is, is Director McCarty, is the appropriation from last year's budget and the, the purchase is gonna be made for next year, or is it the appropriation for next year's budget and coming out of next year's equipment fund? Can you explain that again for me, please?
Okay, so this situation is that we are looking to buy the equipment out of this year's budget, uh, with a loan, a temporary loan from the corporate fund. What will happen is, when we get into next year, assuming everything is approved, the equipment plan is approved, we'll go out and we'll get a local, likely a local loan from a commercial bank, as we have in the past, and we will take 1.2 million of that and repay the corporate fund at that time, and then use the rest to buy all the other equipment that we're employing.
So is it coming out of last year's equipment, or is it coming out of next year's?
This would be part of next year's plan, just purchased early, just implemented a little early.
So the funds are appropriated this year, but they're gonna be used from next year's budget, correct?
No. The funds are, I mean, that's part of what you're approving tonight, is the ability to go out and there's, if you look at one of those, there's a line...
Mm-hmm.
...that we would purchase from. It's essentially, uh, allowing for the appropriation and the purchase out of that line.
So it's coming from this year, the monies are coming from this year?
It will become, it, we'll make the purchase this year. Yeah, we'll have to, because we're making the purchase theoretically by the, by February 1st, which is fiscal year 19.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Mine's not registering again. Close it out. Sign out?
Yeah, go back in.
Go back in.
I'm not working at all. I think it's a conspiracy.
That side of the horseshoe. This side's working just fine.
I'm going for it, Chief, I promise.
A computer conspiracy.
It's the Russians.
I'll suck to Mike.
Can we do a roll call?
Yeah, roll call, please. Alderman, Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman, Senor.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fuginci.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Aye.
Alderman McMinim.
Aye.
Alderman Tylin.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes, Mayor. Thank you. The ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2019-009, an ordinance approving the appointment of Jeff Tucker to the Springfield Municipal Band Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2019-009 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
They've moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Can I do that? Good. Is that all right, Council, Corporate Council?
I think we can vote no.
Motion passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Alderman, Redpath.
Mayor, I, I know the frustration came out on the snow removal stuff tonight. I appreciate your call that you gave me today, and, uh, I know the Public Works Department's doing their best. Um, and I know that we're looking at alternatives for this weekend, so thank you for, uh, for that, uh, phone call you gave me today. And I know you got the same phone calls I got, is probably through other, 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 uh, automatic districts too, so.
We all got it.
Thank you. Any other, uh, whole business? We do have, uh, budget hearings today. Shortly after this, there'll be police and fire, and then, uh, budget hearings on Tuesday will be with CWLP. Any, uh, new business come before the city council? Alderman, Senor.
Uh, just a reminder that the city tournament will start tomorrow, uh, instead of Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. This year, it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so everybody go down and support your favorite team.
That's at 6 o'clock? Is that when the games start?
6 o'clock each night, yes, sir. 6 and 8.
Very good. And then, uh, Monday's the, uh, Martin Luther King Breakfast. The city is closed Monday, and that breakfast is at the Wyndham Hotel. It starts at 7:30.
7 o'clock.
At 7 o'clock?
It starts at 7.
You better get there at 7, if you want a seat.
Yeah, you have to, uh, have seats prior to.
Well...
Alderman, Redpath.
No, I'm good, brother. Thanks.
And, oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's one, they're not selling tickets at the door this year, so if you...
Right.
...come looking for a ticket, they're gonna turn you away.
Yeah, you have to pre-purchase tickets.
I have two extras if you want one.
Any other new business come before the city council? Is there anybody who wished to address the city council? Like, come up?
Alice is mad. Huh? Said Alice is mad.
Yeah, I don't usually get mad.
State your name and address for the council. We'd appreciate it.
Alice Ramey, 1212 South Livingston, Springfield, Illinois, 62703. If you do not know, there's a...
Thank you.
Uh, I know how hard it is to shovel snow. I used to do it when my dad was alive. And when you have cars on narrow streets, it's like doing zigzag work to keep from hurting the cars or whatever. There should be an ordinance that when the snow gets up to seven feet, no cars on the street. If they can't find a place to park their cars, where people can take care of their streets without them calling everybody, I think it's time they learn, okay? Because I parked mine up. I got two. I parked both of them up there where